Just to let you know, we're still waiting for one member, so we have a quorum. So, we're not going to go to the agenda items as of yet. We're gonna just wait for our fourth member to appear. And as soon as he appears, we'll come back on the record and you'll be able to...
And Elizabeth, did you talk to him? He's on his way?
Yes, he said he will be here in my corner.
Okay, cool.
So, he should be back shortly. Thank you.
Gee Dad!
Gee Dad!
Okay, we're back in session. We've got four members. This is the City of Ellsworth Planning Board meeting for January 3rd, 2024. Now, call it order. We have planning board introductions, please.
Mark Rich, board member.
Nelson Gill, member.
John DeLeo, chair.
Rick Lyles, vice chair.
Staff introductions.
Matt Williams, city planner.
Elizabeth Foote, assistant city planner.
Before we get to item number two, what I'd like to do is add an agenda item. On January, we're supposed to have the election of officers. So, if somebody makes a motion, it needs to be unanimous to add it to the agenda.
I make them... Go ahead.
Got my vote.
Second.
Without a motion, that's very cool.
Rick, why don't you go ahead and make the official motion?
I'd like the motion to elect officers, add it to the agenda, the election of officers.
And here's the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. You want to put that? Doesn't matter where we put it.
I mean, if you want to do adoption minutes first, we can just make it item number three.
Okay.
Okay. So, why don't we do the election officers now?
Or not do the adoption of minutes first.
Oh, adoption minutes. Any additions or reasons?
We'll get the minutes be adopted, minutes of the last meeting be adopted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item number three, election of officers. So, we've got chair, vice chair.
Nominate John DeLeo for chair before, you know, anybody gets out of the room.
Second.
Any other nominations?
No.
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
I nominate Rick Lyles for vice chair.
I'm willing to serve.
Let's make a second.
Second.
Any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Nominate Nelson Gill secretary.
Second.
Not asking if you're willing to serve.
Oh, yes.
It doesn't matter. Any other nomination? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, item 3A. Motion to affirm that the city's public service community development block grant application was reviewed by the planning board and the project proposing the application conforms to the city's comprehensive plan in chapter 56, the city's land use and zoning regulations. Can you just explain that? Because this, I think, is actually the first time I've ever...
Yep, so...
...dealt with this.
So, the city is partnering with Families First Community Center to apply for a community development block grant to help them fund an expansion of their services. So, essentially provide housing assistance, heating assistance, or the assistance in purchasing of like goods for like if you do find housing, but if you don't have like pillows for your bed or blankets or something like that, the funds can help with that as well for people who are unhoused or looking for affordable housing. So, the reason this is coming from planning board is for community development block grants, a lot of these applications actually involve the construction of a new building or a facility or like the renovation of a facility. In this case, this program does not involve that, but because it's a federal grant, this is still part of the process we have to go through. And so, essentially, you're just affirming that the program does not interfere with the UDO at all, which in the packet is like an environmental review where the code enforcement officer affirmed that there are no environmental issues with the providing of this program through Families First Community Center.
You don't happen to have that written down in a motion form, do you?
Well, all you would have to do is sign the letter, actually. It doesn't really need to... I mean, the motion would be a motion to affirm the city's public service community development block grant application was reviewed by the planning board and that the project proposed and the application conforms to the city's comprehensive plan and chapter 56, the city's land use and zoning ordinance. And then that... So, that agenda item is essentially the motion.
Okay.
And then he has to sign it?
And at the end of the meeting, we'll have you sign it.
Any discussion?
Oh, and sorry. The letter is available for you, but it wasn't completed by the packet. So, you can vote to accept the letter as part of your packets right now, and then you can read it over if you would like.
Are those copies of said letter in her hand?
Yes.
Yep.
So, we got a motion.
And she's going to share them with us?
Physically hand them to you.
But we all don't have to sign it, just here?
No, just to assign it.
Okay, so Mark made a motion. Is there a second?
Sure.
Just voting on accepting the letter?
Yes.
Okay. So, all in favor? Any further discussion on what we're voting on? Thank you. Nope, I got it.
So, all the... I mean, this... So, this is like $50,000.
Yep.
And that all goes to basically the materials that they give out?
No, it goes to...
I mean, I saw the budget, but it's like a whole bunch of it was materials.
Right.
So, I assume that that's...
It's a chunk of it, but some of it will also be used for like the direct services of like the heating assistance or the rental assistance.
Having someone to rent to, doesn't it?
Right, yeah.
Was there any... You know, and this is just an aside, really, because it doesn't speak to the, you know, the motion per se, but did they make... I mean, they talked about, you know, working and giving walk-in folks help with getting section eight voucher assistance and stuff like that. My question is, did they reach out to people like the Housing Authority who's in charge of section eight housing vouchers and say, hey, you know, we want to do this or can we do this? Can we be of assistance or anything like that? Or don't we know that?
I don't know if they've reached out to the Housing Authority, but as someone on the Housing Authority, you might know.
Well, as someone on the Housing Authority, I never heard of this via the Housing Authority at all, so...
Oh, yeah.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that staff, you know, they didn't talk to staff.
Right.
Because I don't think there was any need for a formal motion or anything from the Housing Authority, but...
Right, communication.
I just wondered.
It could have been communication.
So, Families First is the actual applicant for the grant here?
Well, so the city has to apply, and that's why we're not really doing any work besides the grant. I mean, Jan has done a lot of work with the grant, but outside of the program, like programmatically, we're not doing any work. So, it's... We have to apply because CDVG grants are available to municipalities. And then the money, funds will get sent to the nonprofit.
Sort of OBO for Families First here. I think to Rick's point, just sort of like when we are reviewing an application, we have the applicant here. And this, it's not a criticism, just a suggestion, somebody from Families First to kind of answer some of these questions, like what's the program? What are you going after? What are you going to do with the funds, et cetera? If it has to come in front of us, it'd be nice if there was a body to direct some of those questions.
Yeah, I mean, next time, we'll make sure that happens, but there's... You're only reviewing for compliance with the comp plan and the UDO, so this does not interfere with the UDO.
You know, I'm all about spirit. If we're going to spend the cities and our time to be here...
I appreciate that, so next time...
Go get them, Mark.
I can make that happen for you, and I will.
It's not our money, though, that we're spending. We're applying for a grant.
Yes.
And it's pass-through, basically.
Yeah.
All right. I mentioned, I mean, part of this, that section eight being involved. Would any of this, could they... Would they be able to encourage? Because we've talked in the past about how there's a lot of section eight money out there, but we don't have enough section eight landlords to accept the vouchers. Could part of this encourage, you know, the people involved in this grant, try and go out and find landlords willing to accept section eight?
I don't... I mean, that may end up happening, where like if they are trying to find places to put people who are looking for section eight, and they reach out to landlords and maybe educate them on the potential benefits of providing that type of housing, but I don't think it falls under the grant, like the goals of this grant in particular. It may happen by happenstance instead.
You know, the funding is there for the vouchers. People obviously need them, and we can't find landlords to accept them. And, you know, uses all the money that we have.
But let's take the money when we can get it.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Is there apologies of just not jumping out? Is there a match component from this for the city?
No.
No.
Did they actually have? Well, yeah. You know, they also mentioned they had low-income and folks involved in the planning process or whatever. Did that actually happen?
Well, so, there's a... So, this has been the council several times, and so last time I went to council, they approved a committee to like help work with this grant. And I do believe that committee involved people who are part of the service population, so low-income individuals.
Really? Okay. Because I thought I saw the list of names that was on that committee, and I didn't, other than the councilmen themselves, which, you know, they could be poor, I don't know. Okay. Yeah, I mean, those were basically asides.
Right.
You know, but, okay. Motion to approve?
Yes, please.
Ah, motion to affirm that the city's public service community development block grant application was reviewed by the planning board? It was. And that the project proposing the application conforms to the city's comprehensive plan in chapter 56, city's land use and zoning ordinances.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
So, the phrasing of the motion took as long as the discussion did.
Okay, discussion and action on recommendations for new members.
All right, so we can do them one at a time. Even in your packet, you have the letters of interest supplied by both Vince and John. We'll start with Vince, and if you have any questions for him. I mean, the last time, last meeting, you did kind of give a little pitch, but if you want to come up, just introduce yourself again for members, potential members of the public who may be listening who didn't listen to last month's meeting.
And so, considering that there's going to be a public hearing, you're actually going to let us ask them questions just in case we want to.
Do it.
What would you like, or what would the quinn do you like?
Just like a two-minute elevator pitch on who you are and why you're interested.
Two-minute elevator.
Just a second. Okay, go. My name is Vince Messer. I'm a resident of Ellsworth. I have not been an Ellsworth resident for long, probably about a year and three-quarters. However, I have been a Maine resident and a resident of this area on MDI for 15 years now. I am interested in the planning work because, first of all, I want to see this community grow and grow well, and I really believe that what this committee does in its moments is extremely important for the community. I guess what I'm trying to say is, I think it's very important for us to grow as a community and grow right as a community. And if I can have a part in that, I'd like to.
Any questions?
You can ask questions now?
Yes.
Yes.
We officially can ask questions?
What was my... I forget what the question was. It was like a month ago now, right?
You've got the minutes, so you could probably look it up.
What's that?
You've got the minutes, maybe it's in there.
Oh, it could be. I don't think it was, actually. I guess the question I would have, and I'll ask you too when you get here, is just, you know, what do you think that you can, other than your just personal interest, can bring to the board or the city for that matter?
It's a fair question. I have, in both my current life and previous life, been a member of many boards. I understand how boards operate, how they serve the communities and the organizations they represent. I'm currently on the board at Healthy Acadia, which I had some thoughts about the housing thing in Healthy Acadia. And I'm also on the board at the MDI Hospital. So, I've learned, I think well, how boards work. Prior to that, in the part of my life that where I was actually earning money, I was a member of the executive committee of the American Red Cross, and we did a number of things that, you know, of course, had to work with boards and so on. So, I understand, I think, the process, the influence and the responsibility of boards.
You know, it's the national boards of the Red Cross, right?
Yes. It wasn't... We worked as executive meeting with the national board, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right. Swap out? And I'll just do a vote for both of you at once.
This is vote for two out of two, right?
Yeah, it's a vote for two, so there's no really competition.
So, I'm not from Boston.
You like the Bruins.
But I went to a Bruins game, and I thought my options were a jersey, which wasn't real practical around or wear this around, since I'm in scrubs most of the time. This has been my go-to. And I've noticed that most people up here who love the Northeast really appreciate this, so it's been great so far. So, but I do like the Bruins as well. So, a little about me, kind of similar to what Vince said there. I've been here in the community about a year and a half now. A lot of people know that I'm a surgeon up at the hospital here. I've been practicing medicine for around, call 14 years now, 13 or 14 years since I got out. The reason I was interested in this is that I've kind of expanded what I want to do in life. I want to help a community. I want to take part in this community. I actually really enjoy it here. I've actually fallen in love with Ellsworth since I've been here. I came here from the south, kind of a smaller area. I love the outdoors. I'd been in Alaska as a military doctor and just thought, this would be a neat town to see. And I actually have loved my time here and really actually wanted to continue to see this community grow. I think it's a neat community. I'm very interested in community growth, in real estate. Since I last saw you, I did pass my real estate exam, so I am actually a real estate agent in theory, although I don't work for any groups or anything like that. But I'm fascinated by growth. I even see it since I moved here. I see, you know, big apartment buildings going in. I see all this land, and I always wonder what's it going to be used for? And so, my thought is, is that I'm pretty passionate what I do. I am the busiest urologist we have in the state. I did 11 surgeries today. I love to be busy. I'm motivated, probably too motivated. So, something like this is something that I would love to be a part of, to learn from you guys, because obviously you know more than me, but I think I'm a pretty quick learner. And even today, hearing you guys talk about this, I had about 20 questions as I was sitting there in my chair. So, like I said, just an opportunity to be a part of this.
So, present us with a couple of the questions, please.
Well, it was like a lot of things that you asked for, so I'll be honest, I own a couple of properties here, and a lot of landlords don't know a lot about section eight type stuff. So, I'll be honest, I had an opening right here, but no one really talks about that. So, you know, that's interesting to me, that the community's looking for that. And I see land opportunities where presented the right way, I see all kinds of land that you could build more apartments for section eight type things. I actually see the need and validity of that. I actually have a few people on that that are living in a place that I own. So, to me, I hear the stuff like this, and the expanding of that, and I think, yeah, there's so many questions to ask about that, like how can we make this better? Because the end goal is to make the community better. No matter what becomes before here, we want it to make things better, to make this place grow. And like I said, there's so much for that. So, I thought the same thing there is, well, how do you expand on this? It'd be nice for them to be here and say, well, what are you going to do with the money? It's great to get money, but the question is, well, where's it going to go? I mean, I'd love $30,000 right now too, but you'd have to ask me, where's it going to go? So, just stuff like that is fascinating to me, because like I said, I'm inquisitive in life. As a surgeon, it's always been, I want to know the answers to things. And so, something like this, like I said, I'm a newbie to it, so I'm going to learn a lot from you guys, but I'm very passionate about things. I researched a lot, and just even hearing that, I would have loved to have them here and say, what are you going to do with it? How is this going to grow the community? Can it affect section eight people? Because obviously, the cause of this is going to affect people in that kind of area of life, so to speak. So, just things that I thought when I was sitting back there.
Just like make a comment too. Like my question or suggestion in that regard was not to interrogate the witness.
Sure.
What are you going to do with the money?
Right.
It's legitimate curiosity. What are you going to do with the money? Because I think this is a healthy conversation.
Right.
This is also a conversation that is hypothetically streamed to the public, all two or three of them that are watching. So, everything that we talk about here is also shared with the public. And yes, this, I think, should be a public discourse.
Right.
So, it's not interrogation, but I think more folks should hear this conversation and...
It happened at four council meetings, but that's okay.
Well, when I read that, they're sounding like a great cause, but I have no clue what they're going to do.
Or how you can help.
Right, that's what I'm saying. That's what I mean along there. That's exactly like those lines, is like you can't help something if you don't know what it really is doing at the end of the day. So, you're not interrogation, but just your curiosity of how's this going to help? What's it going to go to?
That brings to mind, I mean, some of the comments from A Doc, about section eight and not being familiar with it, is, you know, is there... That you currently have apartments, houses, whatever, for rent? And, you know, how do people, other than looking in the newspaper, help on it and rent? You know, I think there's a lot of rental, you know, houses, apartments out there that the general public, who are looking for apartments, don't know where to look, can't find them.
Agree a million percent. And I'll tell you this much too, as a landlord, I only ran into section eight houses, stuff like that, because some of my tenants already had it. And so, I think a lot of us don't, I don't want to get off topic or anything like that, but it really isn't that bad of a deal once I realize the people on it. I mean, it really is a very sustainable thing. Like I said, I don't want to get off the top of what you guys are talking about, but that's why things talk about growth in the community. Like, there are so many ways that people still need help with houses and stuff like that, which obviously, this is part of what the board does.
I mean, I look at, you know, look for rentals all the time, just because there's so much demand and want to keep, you know, up to date on, you know, what's out there, what... You know, because I know people that are looking for apartments. I know people that are looking for apartments for six months a year.
Right.
And, you know, it just seems like there's got to be a better way to do it.
Agree.
To get the landlord and the prospective tenant in touch with each other.
Just as an FYI and a side, the Housing Authority is paying a $500, I think it's $500 now, premium to get new landlords into the system. Just saying. Pass that along.
A plug.
I would ask the same question I asked Vince, which is, you know, you were talking about why you wanted to do that, and that's all good. I mean, you know, what do you think you can bring to the board in terms of background or whatever?
I think the main thing is my passion for things. Like I said, I mean, it's known fact in the community here, I'm the busiest doctor we have at Main Coast Hospital. I love results. I love for people to have good results, and that's why I look at this board here, is it's a bigger spectrum than even what I do, because like housing issues, you talk about things like that. So, what I want to bring to it is a passion level of saying, how do we fix things and make it better? Because I think we always know in life, you can always be better. I've heard people say the enemy of good is better. I don't necessarily believe that. I think you can always push to get better, you shouldn't get stagnant. And I think this is stuff here that we discuss, things that are discussed in here, are ways for growth. Because when a community stops growing, we know they die. I've been in the south, and in the south, you see a lot of communities and cities die. So, I think this is obviously an opportunity here where we're looking for growth, ways to do that. I want to help with that anyway I can. And like I said, I'll be honest, at first, I'd be leaning on you guys a lot.
I would also say to the two of you that, you know, there are opportunities for that kind of engagement, other than the board, okay?
Sure.
Primarily the comprehensive plan, which is ongoing, and will be having more committee meetings, I assume, going forward over the late winter and the spring and so forth. It really gets busy now in terms of the planning or the, you know, coming up with what the comprehensive plan is. The whole first part has been, well, here's where we are.
Yeah.
And here's the data to support where we are and maybe identify needs and so forth. And then going forward, what is the vision and how do you actually articulate that vision? So, my point is that there's a lot of places for opportu... There's a lot of opportunities, I'm sorry, to get engaged in that.
Right.
So, you know, there's some official stuff that goes on back and forth between the planning board and the comprehensive planning group, okay? But there's all kinds of other stuff as well. And I would say that to the public as well. All, two or three of them.
So, are you proposing that these gentlemen sign up for the comprehensive plan?
Possibly so, at one way or the other.
That's what I'm hearing, gentlemen. Go on, sir.
So, that I was more articulate than I thought, articulate than I thought.
I've had minimal involvement with the comprehensive plan because it hasn't gone that far yet, but I'm very interested in it. Would being on this council preclude being involved with the comprehensive plan?
No.
Well, there are two official members from the planning board that are on the comprehensive plan steering committee, but there are lots of opportunities for engagement in the planning process that don't involve being on the steering committee. And so, I mean, that's just open. I mean, there's not a list that says, oh, well, here's Vince, he's a member, here's Rick, he's a member, and so forth. It's just kind of like, we're having a meeting on topic X, you know, about going forward, show up.
Right, you attended the population and demographics subcommittee meeting the first time, so there wouldn't be nothing to prevent you from attending that again?
Well, and you came to the open house, which was the open-air house, whatever we had down here in the street. So, it's just more of that and, you know, really articulate how we get forward now.
The only thing we'd be careful of is if, like, say, John and Rick both attended a meeting as planning board members, you would not be attending as a planning board member, you would just be as a member of the public.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Having been born and raised just outside New York City, I won't hold it against you that you're a Bruins fan.
Remember, it's kind of a lukewarm one since I'm from the south, so...
I do like the colors, because, you know, the Steelers are black and gold.
I think it's hard...
Beyond that, the hell with it.
I think it's hard for a grown man to wear a jersey around all the time, but I figured I could wear a hoodie around, so that's why I went with the hoodie, so...
In Maine, you can wear a hoodie all the time.
That's what I figured, that's why I wear it.
Yeah, all year round.
It's great to wear it when I'm in scrubs, so yes, that's...
The best possible restaurant you can think of, or you could just walk right in.
That's right.
Or church, who knows?
Thank you very much, Doc. Let's go on to the public hearing. Is nobody here?
Any questions online?
I don't, I'm not even, I don't think we're online at all.
No, there's no, like.
Close the public hearing. What is the wish of the board?
What are they looking at me for? Uh, I make a motion that, should we make a motion to accept these? Well, we're basically making a motion to recommend, uh, or not.
Yes.
These folks to the council.
These gentlemen, yes, indeed.
So, uh, do them both at the same time.
Yeah, make a motion to recommend Vince Messer and John Calafano.
Yes.
As planning board alternate members.
That's what I wanted to say. And they, and bearing in mind that they come on, and you all come on as alternate members.
So, like, sorry, I was gonna say, I would add that you also vote to recommend the elevation of Mike Haney to a full member.
Oh, we have to do that, too?
Yes.
Okay, all those things. I just moved that.
So moved, second.
Did you understand that, Elizabeth?
I got it.
Hey. She's, she's smart, dude.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Welcome aboard. Well, welcome aboard, maybe. When, when is the council meeting?
Uh, this will go in February.
Go in February, so that's what, first?
The twelfth, I think.
The twelfth, okay.
Yeah, because it's a week early.
So they will not be?
So they won't be at the February.
February. You can come to the meeting, but you'll be unofficial.
March should be the first.
But they will not be alternate members yet. They'll just come for their own education if they live, and then to keep up with what's happening, and then February is.
And learn about our personalities.
Can the MMA, is that it, Main Municipal, so, yeah, MMA is having that, um, initial, you know, one of their workshops about, you know, being on a planning board or Board of Appeals, but they won't be?
They have them pretty regularly. I would not suggest we pay for them to go until they're actually voted members, because that's public funds for private citizens, but.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
They hold them regularly enough.
Oh, no, like, every couple of months, they have, they have it, so.
We'll give them a crash course, too, if they have to, to wait a little bit.
Baptism by fire. Moving on, discussion of the twenty twenty-four planning board schedule.
So in your packets, there's the, uh, twenty twenty-four schedule, everybody could do every year. We'll have it going down through the early months of twenty twenty-five. It's mostly just, um, for you guys to review, see if there's any dates amongst, uh, people present where we think everyone, people won't be here, so like, we could change the date and avoid not having a quorum. Um, or, you know, if Elizabeth and I missed, like, maybe there's a holiday that we included by accident, um, just double checking before we uh, vote to move forward, or just before we move forward, if you really don't need to vote, but, you know, like, July third's one where it's a, July fourth is on a Thursday, so we, that's, we're gonna be closed on Thursday, but if people are gonna be away on that Wednesday, that could be one where it's better to hold it the week later, or something like that, or on a different day that week, but.
That's the only one that jumps out at me, July third.
I, uh, I work around these dates because they are so important.
And I know that, and I appreciate it.
January second is a Thursday for twenty twenty-five.
Right, so
I'm sorry?
In twenty twenty-five, uh, the meeting is on a Thursday because the Wednesday was New Year's Day.
Ah, okay.
That one has been changed. Uh, we should actually probably add something, like an asterisk at the bottom with that on that, just to denote for people reviewing it.
I mean, if initial rises later on in the year, we.
Yeah, it's not, we can always change it, but just an initial review if anything.
Good enough.
Cool, and we will get that posted to the website, and, uh, it'll be available to the public.
Okay, uh, discussion on ordinance prioritization for the upcoming fiscal year.
Yep, so this is running in the budget time, so, you know, we're starting to think about how much money we need to fulfill the goals of the Planning Board and the Planning Office. Um, so I have a couple, we have a couple of ideas of priorities for ordinance updates. I mean, the subdivision ordinance is one that really needs to be updated and amended, like, really kind of modernized a bit more. And so that would be like a suggestion that we work on updating that. There are definitions still within, uh, chapter fifty-six, article fourteen, that we could probably tighten up, uh, which would then translate into amendments to the table of uses. I'm kind of on the fence on whether we should change the table of uses too much before the comp plan is done. Um, but we could still start at least to tighten up those definitions ahead of time. And another thing I would like to look into doing, is what a couple of other municipalities do, is where there are certain things that they remove from their U D O into a manual that's unreferenced within the ordinance, so that way you don't have to pay and go through the whole process to edit, like, if we don't wanna have thirteen hard copies turned in for every project, we can just change that with planning board approval. Um, instead of having to do, like, a potential citywide mailing to say, like, okay, we're only gonna ask for seven hard copies now, um, the safe paper, and so we throw out less. So that sort of thing. It's more like the procedural portion of it, um, but not like the actual planning board requirement portion of it.
Now, like, the citywide mailings that we do, are those as a result of our ordinance, or are some of those a result of state statute?
Um, so it depends on what it is, so there are certain things that we have to do, the mailings required by state. Um, so like, it wouldn't change, anytime we make a change to the table of uses, we'd still have to follow the state laws for that, which is you have to send to people within that zone, or anyone who abuts that zone, and a lot of times the changes we make end up affecting the whole city anyway, so we just do the citywide mailing. But there are other portions where we are a little bit stricter than the state requires.
It just seemed like some of the, and, and maybe the notices, it seemed like there was a flurry of notices we had to keep sending out and out, and I mean, the expensive those are. I mean, if it was something that was driven by our ordinance, that, you know, we could reduce a little.
Yeah, I mean, a part of that, I think we're talking about the solar, you know, it was your, your, your green planner, uh, learning as he went. So there really wasn't the need to send out so many, but because, like, right, if there was, like, one small procedural mistake, then you have to start the process over again, and do the mailing over and over, yeah.
I wasn't gonna mention any names.
Hey.
Well, you did.
Responsibility for that.
He threw himself on his own sword.
Hey, I'm still here, so.
Uh, I mean, would it, whatever we're looking at to change, would you suggest that we look at it with, you know, like, a small committee versus trying to discuss everything? With seven of us, and then, you know, get together with a couple, with you and Elizabeth, and a couple of board members, kinda go over the, from the first suggestions, then bring them to the board?
It depends. I mean, again, like, if there's a topic you're particularly interested in, so like, say, the subdivision review, like, you think you have pretty good grasp of it, and you'd like to see certain changes made to it, if you wanna form subcommittees, you absolutely can. But again, this board is small enough that it kind of acts as a good, a good, good, good committee, because really, five of you, and then the two alternates, so. But, you know, again, as long as it's just two planning board members, you can schedule a meeting with us, as just as long as we present that information to the full board at some point. Everybody's working the same.
What you're saying is it's not an official meeting.
Right.
Okay. With things like, I'm, did you have one?
Nope.
With things like the definitions and stuff, I can understand why they, you know, you don't have to wait for the comprehensive plan to, to change some of that stuff. I guess my question is, let's say that there was a, you know, a set of changes of the definitions that you said, well, you know, we really need to do this. Would we wait to do that with the rest of the stuff that might come from the, from the comprehensive plan? Or do we, would we do it now? I mean, is, is, is there any percentage in doing that? I mean, I don't want the, I wouldn't want the council somewhere along the line to say, my God, you guys come here every, you know, couple of months with a change to the, you know, how could blah, 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 and, you know what I mean? I mean, it's, it's almost an optics thing as opposed to.
I mean, if, if you're really concerned about that, um, because all these changes do have to go to council.
Right.
You kind of just batch all the changes, so like, for the year, we decide we're gonna make X, Y, Z changes, then we just go to council. You work through them here, and then you don't have to recommend, so say you work on the subdivision ordinance, we're happy with it, we just stop working on it, and then we move on to the next thing. But then we have a final meeting where we review all the changes again.
Package.
And then recommend all of them at the same time to council.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's some, some simple changes that have been made, you know, prior to the completion of the comprehensive plan. I mean, we've talked, I mean, for a long time, that, I mean, what I'd like to see is, you know, when somebody brings in a, a subdivision or apartment building, you know, to have some drawings of what it's gonna look like. Not that we're gonna say, okay, we want it to be this color, or this form, or this other, but it just to be able to have that in the requirement to submit, to show us what it's gonna look like.
So like an exterior architectural plan?
Yeah, I mean, because, you know, who knows what's gonna end up being built? I mean, I mean, Bar Harbor has, you know, a ton of.
Well, they have the design review board, so it's.
I don't wanna get into that.
Thank you.
So maybe the thing to do is to ask ourselves to, you know, kinda go through the, go through the thing in the next, whatever period of time, and actually come up with a, a hit list.
You can always email.
As opposed to trying to just wing it through as we sit here.
Yeah, because you can email them to Elizabeth and I, too. It's not something that has to take action, so the board can just email it. Um, I'll just include everybody who's on the board on your list that you send, so not a ton of repeats, or if people like the idea, they can say, I second, you know, Rick's idea.
Okay. So you, you, you're okay with that kind of email going to everybody?
Yeah, because at the next meeting, we'll just make it, the list public, and we'll discuss it again, but like, everybody can see the list as it's going in, but there's no action being taken, so, yeah.
Okay.
We're just kinda brainstorming small ideas. I would mention the, the inclusion of satellite photography. It's always better when we get it. These days, I don't know for sure. I, I assume all the stuff you can get online is free use, like, there's no cost for the applicants. I, I don't know that, but if that were the case.
The city provides satellite imagery. I mean, it's usually like a year or two behind, but it's good enough to, you know.
I, I would love to see them on every application. We're talking about a lot of land. I, I like to see the satellite image on everyone.
Well, there's, there's really a variance in, in what these proposals look like. You know, and a lot of times, I think we're saying, okay, we know what you mean, blah, 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 and others are like, wow, this is really pro, right? And would they, were all like that? And I don't know that it's that much, I don't know that it's a huge cost to, you know,
Yeah, I don't wanna.
Make these things a little more spiffy.
Create new burden or cost.
Exactly, right.
A lot of this technology is, it's, it's the city provides it anyway, but a lot of this technology is readily available now.
Yeah, truly is. I mean, when we, when we get a, 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 a proposal someplace, and, I mean, John knows everywhere, right, and he doesn't need Google Maps to, to help him out, but I do, right? And, you know, and you go, and you say, okay, oh, there, okay, oh, wow, I didn't know that was behind there and that kinda stuff for, you know, relatively new residents. Um, you know, the idea of going to Google Maps and having it relatively up-to-date thing is pretty cool.
I appreciate it.
Any other comments?
Uh, well, I guess it'll be staff comments separate from this, so, yeah, I'm good.
I've got, and I've got a question.
So, so, so is that's a, that's on our do list, to-do list before the next meeting is to get said notes or ideas?
I would like it, I would like the ideas within the next two weeks, because I have to have my budget suggestions done before the next meeting, but, uh, so at least I have a breadth of, like, how many changes we might be making to include in my budget, and then at the next meeting, we can at least pare it down to what we're actually gonna be able to work on in a year.
And how exactly does that affect your budget?
Because if I have to do a citywide mailing of some sort, or post, like, extra postings, if we're gonna do a workshop, it's just extra money for that sort of thing, yeah.
Gotcha.
Cool. Uh, do you have a question, John?
Yes, actually, can you tell us about L B Ellsworth LLC?
Can I tell you about what?
L B Ellsworth LLC and their housing project on Beals Avenue.
Oh, um, so.
Had a public notice?
Yes.
About D E P.
So it's a project that will be coming to the planning board at some point in the future. Um, it's an affordable subdivision that's going in at the end, or is looking to go in at the end of Beals Avenue. Um, so they're gonna extend Beals Avenue into, so if you're familiar with Beals Avenue, where the road ends, near where the crossing at the railroad track is, it's, can be stopped out to extend into a lot that has a lot of space, um, beyond that. And they're looking to put an affordable subdivision, um, as far as I can understand so far, back there, so it would be priced affordably, because they're using money from the state's Affordable Subdivision Program to build it. You know, it's been a while since I've had a conversation with them about the project, um, but it's, I forget how many units it's gonna be off the top of my head, but it's a fair, it's a sizable housing development.
Hundred, two hundred, three hundred?
I'm not gonna guess, because I don't have any ballpark off the top of my head.
Is that a unit?
No.
Oh, no.
I mean, I think it's.
They're, the reason they did the public notice is because they're doing their stormwater application with the E P. So it just has to be publicly noticed. I do have a public copy available in the office for review, um, for their stormwater application.
I mean, just guessing, I think that, that lot that they're thinking of is maybe fifteen acres, roughly?
Yeah, and it's a pretty wet one, too, so they're not even developing on all fifteen acres. But, uh.
And I know somebody's been thinking about doing something there for a while.
Yeah, it's been an idea for a while.
But it must be proceeding, so.
My, my first, first question would be, what is the current plan, if you will, use the term loosely, for Beal Avenue, the, whatever the spur is that actually comes down to High Street?
I'm not sure what the zoning is.
That would either be neighborhooded or urban.
Okay.
I don't remember off the top of my head, yeah.
So at one point in time, you talked about closing that off?
I think that's still a possibility.
Because, well, let, let me just say.
They are, they are operating that that is what's gonna happen.
I'm sorry?
The developer is operating under the presumption that that is what's going to happen.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, putting more cars through that little road thing is just, man, you're, that's just, it's terrible. Sorry. Traffic guy, right?
Right, but they, we've told them that because of the trail project, that it's very likely that that proportion of Beals will be closed off in the future, and so they're operating.
Do we have any, I am really going down the path of this. Do we have any sense of when that might be, that might be finalized as a thing that we're gonna actually do?
No, because, so V H B is working on really the feasibility engineering right now. They did a feasibility study, and now they're actually, like, looking into, you know, how much all these right-of-ways would cost, how much space there is for right-of-way on the properties, and so they're really going through and talking to the landowners. There'll be community meetings about it, like, later in this winter. So it's not a sure thing that's gonna be built yet, but like, we're moving along with it.
Okay.
And the project has not been presented yet.
Right.
Right.
So we don't know the scope.
Those are in the neighborhood zone.
Neighborhood, okay.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so you'll see all, you'll see their stormwater calculations when they come to the planning board. They're actually just getting it done with the state way ahead of time, because normally people come to preliminary and then turn in their state applications before they come for final, but it sounds like they're gonna try and have their state stuff done before they even come for preliminary.
So maybe presented in March?
I have no idea.
No.
They haven't reached out to me about when they're gonna come.
Any other communication with other housing projects, like the Bolin Alley project?
No, I have not heard from their architect in a long time. And then, it's a small, that's actually not public yet, so, not, not off on that one. I don't think so. I know Bolin Alley, behind the Bolin Alley was one that you've seen, um, Arbor House, the Old Mill Road development is technically a subdivision.
And they're coming back.
They're planning to come back relatively soon. I would say in the next month or two.
What about the, um, I can't even think of his name off the top of my head, but it was about seven lots out on the Bucksport Road next to the concrete plant. I mean, they came once, and it just got.
Oh, Atlantic Highway?
No, uh, well, not that one. Uh, going right down on Bucksport Flash just before you get to Woodland Road. It's like about seven lots. Uh, it's a guy that owns the gravel pit. Can't think of his name.
On the right-hand side, yeah, right?
But we're getting distracted from the subject, no?
Fair question. I mean, like, we're done with the ordinance prioritization, you know?
Staff comments.
Staff commentary. Um, I'm not sure I'm familiar with what you're talking about. By the gravel pit. I mean, are it's Jesse's Beach?
On Bucksport Road.
You know, I mean, where Hughes Brothers put in that concrete plant.
At the end of the long stretch before you go uphill.
Right, the only one I'm familiar with out that way is the Atlantic Highway.
It's, it's in.
It's in?
Well, the, the concrete.
Right, the concrete.
The concrete plant's there.
But I'm not sure what subdivision you're talking about. I mean, was that before I was here?
To be decided later.
Because I, I haven't heard any.
We'll wait, we'll wait for John's memory to clear up. We could be here all night.
I was like, I haven't heard of a subdivision past the concrete plant. Like, there's an existing one past the concrete plant.
No, it's a, it's a new one.
It was.
Steve Salisbury presented. It's the owner of the gravel pit.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that one.
He's from Illinois. I'll think of his name after I get home.
And his brother's cousin's wife, too.
Okay, never mind.
Yeah, that's, those are the only housing developments, um, that I'm aware of, uh, that, like, large ones, anyway. And then sure, my only staff comment is that, uh, the code office is now full. Uh, we've hired a deputy code enforcement officer. She looks a lot like the one we had previously, because she is. Bobby's back, so. So she has returned as a deputy code enforcement officer.
Does that come under the category of what goes around comes around, or?
I suppose, yeah.
Okay.
So it'll be, uh, yeah, Robert, you met last meet, or, yeah, was it your last meeting?
Yeah.
And then Bobby will be the deputy, and Lori will be there until she retires.
Well, that sounds like a good transition team-ish thing. Cool.
So that's all I've got.
Good.
Is that it, kids?
That's it.
Washington O'Jern.
Take it. All in favor?
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.